Welcome to the January 11th regular meeting of the Board of Education. I ask that you all please rise for the salute to the flag. Mindy?
Here.
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 Thank you to all the board members for being present this evening and to everybody who's in attendance in the public. Draw your attention to Letter D, Minutes. All board members should have received in their packet on Friday, the minutes from the regular meeting on December 14th, 2015. Are there any questions on those minutes? I would ask for a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the minutes from the December 14th, 2015 meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Letter E in the agenda. Tonight is a very special evening for those of us on the board because we get to recognize and honor students from Judson Elementary School who have received the distinguished honor of being the December Student of the Month. It's wonderful to have all of you here. You are wonderful role models to the rest of your classmates, and I'm sure we join your parents and other family and friends in being very, very proud of you. Dr. Cartamola is going to call your name, and we'd like you to come on up right here. And I'm going to hand you a very special certificate, and Dr. Cartamola is going to shake your hand, and then you can go back and sit for a few minutes before we take your picture. Okay? Dr. Cartamola?
Okay, again, these are our Judson Elementary School students. They were Students of the Month for December. I'll start with Grade III. We have Andrew Brown.
We're super proud of you.
Also in Grade III, Emma DeFrancesco. In Grade IV, we have Yuritza Vasquez. In Grade IV, we also have Colin Butler.
Great job, Colin.
In Grade V, Evan Williams. And also in Grade V, Sophia Samoz.
I would ask that all the students who received award this evening, come up to the front to have your photograph taken with the superintendent.
(inaudible) Get close. Let me just tell all of you something, and parent something. We've done this enough over the past year that we figured out the best way for you to get the right pictures. We start by looking to the left, so anybody whose parents is over there, we get that. Then also look in the middle, and then also look to the right, okay? That way you can all get a picture where you are. So we'll start by looking to the left, okay? (inaudible) Okay, in the middle. Yeah, hold your stick up. One more to the right. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to all of our students. I know, I speak for the entire board and Ms. Brown and Dr. Cartamola when I tell you that the best part of our job is being able to recognize the students that achieve at this level. We also see them, we seem to see the same children later on down the line in their careers at Watertown Public Schools. So we know you're on the right path, and we're sure that we're going to see you here again soon. So congratulations. Moving on to Agenda F, report from Student Council Representative Karina Mancini.
Good evening, everyone. Here are this week's updates. In second grade reading classes at John Trumbull, students are studying how a character develops throughout a story and how to make predictions. In writing class, students wrote New Year's resolutions and are beginning a unit on writing fictional stories. At Judson, Student Council hosted a fundraiser where many hats, scarves, and mittens were donated to the Social Services Department. Also, the Intervention Retaching Enrichment Block began on January 4th. Tutors, classroom teachers, and specialists will be providing additional instruction to the students. Students at Polk will begin taking four short Ames Webb subtests, as well as the developmental reading assessment. The information from these tests will be used at the next PLC meeting to plan large and small group instruction. Swift Peace Pals will start their Choose Kind initiative this week. They are going to be planning activities for the month of February, and next month's SSP will incorporate these same ideas. Also, Mrs. Rader's French class had a special visitor last week to discuss the importance of using French due to its use around the world. He cited his success as a journalist from being able to converse in many different countries around Europe. At the high school, PSAT scores will be available online this week, with paper score reports being sent out by the end of January and reviewing being done in SSP. Midterms exams are also beginning Thursday, January 14th. Today, Link Crew hosted Cookies and Cramming after school for the freshmen, and it was a big success in helping them prepare for these tests. I was a part of this today, and I could say that it was a big success, and it really prepared them. That's all for this week's updates.
Thank you very much, and we wish all of the students studying for their upcoming midterms, good luck, great success. And I did have two children in my house who attended that this afternoon, and it worked out very well for them. It helped them prepare, and it's a really great thing that the high school does. Moving on to G, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report.
Thank you. Realizing as I prepared for tonight that it actually has been quite a while since we've sat at the table together, because as you know, we had one board meeting, so we have not been here since December 14th. Since December 14th, besides spending probably the vast majority of my time, we're looking back through the emergency plans, working with Chief Black, the Chief of Police, and with all of the individual school administrators and the administrative team as a whole, I'll get into all of that in a moment when we update on the plans. That was certainly a large part of how I've spent the last almost month. But in addition to that, I have continued the school visits. I'm at Judson last week. I was also at Swift last week, and at the week before we left for the holiday break, I spent a good part of Tuesday at John Trumbull Primary School. And as you know, that was in part after we selected the young man who designed the holiday card, which we weren't able really to talk about at the last board meeting. But there was a lot of excitement there at John Trumbull over the contest and the fact that this young man had been chosen to represent the entire district with the artwork that he did. It was very exciting for him to see when we came with his, what had been a drawing that he did in class turned into an actual greeting card that could be mailed out to the entire district. I think he probably is still contemplating what that actually means in the big scheme of things. His parents were there with us also. We gave his parents a framed, matted and framed version of the card, and also obviously took pictures with them and so on. So that was pretty exciting on the lighter end of things at John Trumbull. Moving on, let's start with the emergency plans by talking about the way the timeline has gone. When we were here last on the 14th, that was the Monday after we had evacuated Swift on Thursday. And so the majority of the meetings that I had to look back at the emergency plans with the administrators, to debrief with all of the town officials, were held after that night that we were here. Certainly on Friday, after the evacuation, I spent the entire day at Swift, and also on Monday, but that was primarily to still look at whether or not there was an environmental issue at Swift and to stay on top of the situation there and to finish debriefing with the folks at Swift specifically. By the Tuesday after, by the 15th, I started meeting with the other folks. We had, first thing on Tuesday morning, we had a meeting at Munson House, which is, as you know, our central office. And that was in part to talk about, from the district's standpoint, what our responses were, primarily in terms of communications. Because obviously, one of the things that we needed to discuss was, again, how to communicate information from the administrators, the emergency management, people that may be on a scene, also back to central office. Because it's not only about communicating with the parents from the scene, it's about communicating from central office, in part because that is how we often communicate with parents. Because when people want to know what's going on, they will often call Munson House. And so one of the conversations that we had there centered around looking at several versions of old plans, along with the current plans that were had. And I say that because initially, plans that were developed for Munson House began after the September 11 attacks. Those were the first record of a plan I could find at Munson House for the incident response and communications. And obviously, much has changed since then, and so there were several iterations passed, but there were still pieces that persisted when we looked back at the plans that didn't necessarily make sense in today's day and age. One of those specifically, I speak about this so I can lead into the terminology, one of the things that we determined, both in looking at the Munson House plan and in working through all of the state plans, that were turned, the plans that were turned into the state by each of the schools, is that we had a need, if we wanted to be able to respond to a crisis from a district standpoint and have everyone on the same page, we had a need to ensure that the terminology used in this district and in every individual school and at Munson House was consistent with the fire department's terminology and the police department's terminology. And I bring that up right at the get-go because that was a large part of the discussions that were had. And let me give you a couple of examples. There is a flip chart that existed in various forms through all of the schools. This is just a sample. All of the emergency plans were broken down into, we would call this the grab-and-go version. And I say that because I can't pass this around because the majority of what's in it's confidential information for the emergency response team. But I will show you, just so you get an idea of what the plans and the binders look like at all of the schools. So this is the Swift plan. You can see how much information is in here. Certainly, one of the things we have to do as a district and as schools is to take what's in this very comprehensive plan and turn it into something that any person in our building can use. And by any person, I mean obviously a teacher, although they have better understanding of what the comprehensive plans are too, from the meetings and professional development that's done here and the trainings. But also, any given substitute who begins working with the district, a parent volunteer who might be in a classroom, after hours at a PTO meeting. So one of the conversations that we had was, if we go back to after Sandy Hook happened, those of you who were on the board at that time may remember that, and at this time, I was still a principal here at the high school. We had a safety debrief as a whole school district, and then there were also meetings as a town. And one of the things that were discussed in those meetings were the new state templates for plans, which is part of what's in this binder. They are enormous templates that cover not only school security, they cover bullying policies, they have safe school climate plans in them. So there are portions that are to do with emergency situations, and there are portions that have to do with other facets of safety, such as school climate. Those were discussed, and at the time, each school went back and did their own plan. And each school did their own plan primarily in isolation, because emergency plans, as we would assume and certainly know by now, exist in all schools for many years. These aren't new. But the state turned out different guidelines to consider after Sandy Hook, because something I think people thought could never happen, obviously happened there. So the plans became much more comprehensive templates. So each school, with their committee, did those plans. And those plans were turned in to the state by the legislation that was set by July 1st, 2014. So all of those plans that would govern how these schools reacted in times of crisis, all those templates filled out, the ones that were relevant, were turned in literally just before I took on the position of superintendent. Going through this incident highlighted a few things, and the main thing that it highlighted was the communication aspect of the plans. And so I cycle back to what I'm talking about with terminology, because in one part, that is an issue for us when we are coordinating a response with emergency management personnel. For example, when those meetings were had with the emergency management personnel just after Sandy Hook, the police department wanted to continue using codes. So for example, code orange, code red, code blue. But as we moved forward using the state plans, those were abandoned, because one of the things you learn when you go to school security training is that you want to be as specific as you can at the time. Don't expect people to remember what a code orange might be and confuse it with a code blue. If it's a lockdown, call it a lockdown. So there are certain terms, however, that have ambiguous meanings. And one example of those, there is no difference between what some people would have called a lock-in and what some people would call a lock-out, given what school you were in and which, thank you, emergency management personnel showed up. There may be a difference, though, in what they thought that was, in confusing it, for example, with a lockdown. So we went through this language in all of the plans, the large plans, utilized all of the state-provided definitions, took out the ones that did not apply, because sometimes they give you more than one example. I then, we did that as a district. I then went back to our emergency management personnel, namely the police department, and ran all of this back through the Chief of Police to ensure that those officers are trained using the same terminology, which again, comes from the Department of Emergency Management Services at the state. These then being redone are with that in mind. And so although this seems fairly elementary when you look at it, well, of course, we should have these, we should have had these always. We did always have these. But what we didn't have was these that look the same, no matter what school you go to, these that look the same no matter what area of the building you're in, except with obviously specific information that's attached about egress and so on, depending on the room that you're in. And the fact that, as a result of that, no matter what person responds to a scene, they all have the same terminology and the same basic plans to work with. Just to point out one of the things so that these aren't misinterpreted, I mentioned it already, but in more specifics, these are the take and go. There are things that are much more specific. For example, let me just, I'll point out, for example, food allergy. We went back and forth about even including food allergy on this grab-and-go, because, as you know, we have a board policy, a lengthy board policy about food in our schools. We have individual plans for students with food allergies that have to be adhered to. None of that supersedes this. This is simply so that things are kept in the forefront of people's minds as they're in an area, our own folks, as I said, our volunteers, our PTO members, anyone who might be there. And that even though we have this policy, we need to stop and think about how to make it so it's not even an issue. You see, it's addressing food allergy management. In other words, a large scale, not the individual student in your class who may have a shellfish allergy. That's not what this is meant to do. This is meant to be in someone's hands and give them the basics when we are anywhere. You're on a field trip, you have this with you too, because there's emergency numbers that go with it, for example, and something could happen, you're out of state, you're out of town, and there's still things that you would have to know. For example, the school goes into lockdown, and you're going on a field trip, you can't return to the school. Again, that is a piece of the communication plans where we would contact the people who were on the field trip, for example, though. That's aside and aside to this. In addition to this, we have, and these I cannot pass around because these are a confidential piece, I'm just showing you so you get an idea of what a flow chart looks like. These flow charts are now standardized across all of the schools also. Standardized in the big-picture terminology, but narrowed down to the individual schools when, for example, I'll give you, you know, one of the headings is bomb threat evacuation. And so there's basics, do not use cellphone or walkie-talkie. Everyone has to know that, because it's dangerous to use your cellphones or your walkie-talkies. We have an alternate communication plan when the threat is a possible bomb threat. However, you go down through these steps, and these are the specific steps that a person would have to follow if they had students with them. And at some point, it tells you, for example, the one in my hand is from the high school, it tells the people the locations that they have to report to if they are evacuating under a bomb threat. It has district phone numbers, fire department's phone number, obviously, those kinds of things aren't confidential. There are other people's personal cellphone numbers, there's a command structure of people that is confidential. Another thing that is present in these binders that came as a result of this, actually, I'll back up. I spoke at the last board meeting about the fact that after we went through this situation, and we were talking about where to dismiss students from, one of the issues that we talked about quite a bit in the debriefing with the emergency management personnel was that dismissing from that location of the VFW from Swift did not logistically work well. That decision at the time was made by the police department, that it would be the best place to do the dismissal, pickups, walkers, and so on. But as a part of the debriefing, one of the things that we spoke about was, how do we look back at all of the buildings, have the police department look back at all of the buildings and determine if we have to move students from one building to another or from one of these off-site locations, such as the VFW, to another? Where are the staging areas for pickups and what, in these plans, we would call reunification, reunification of students with their parents when they're getting picked up and not bussed? So that is something I asked the police department to do, and the chief and I have spoken about it, they are in the process of mapping those out in the schools. If there was an emergency tomorrow and we had to, we had to have a reunification point, we would decide that based on what we've been doing. But that is how we went to another place, which is what I talked about last time. We have to be prepared for any elongated period of time we may not be able to return to a building, for example. And in the best-case scenario, and I said this last time, we bus students from one location to an alternate evacuation site. We have now made sure that the high school and Swift, and this is what I brought up last time, but we've had, we had to put some logistics into place to make sure it happened, the high school and Swift could receive any of the other schools in their entirety. We can fit them in those two buildings and only those two buildings. So if you look at, and I sent this home in the packet, if you look at the alternate evacuation sites, several changes were made here. As a result of the conversation about dismissing students from the VFW, I asked Chief Black and Ray Sannacola to look back at the original evacuation spots, walk-to sites, because the district has never utilized a bus-to site, except on the spot in an emergency. It was never a part of a plan to take everyone inside another building. There were outside locations, for example, bomb threat at the high school, and we went down to Polk. And we did that via buses, because they got there quickly. Now, we looked at the latest numbers again and tried to make some decisions based on a few things. Number one, obviously, how far is it to walk to the location? We tried to keep all of that within, we didn't try to, they all ended up within a half a mile. We are limited, if you think about, when you look around town, where we can fit people. I wanted, for example, though, the VFW to be taken off as an alternate site. Under the plans that have existed in Watertown for as far back as I could find, Swift's, one of Swift's alternate locations was the VFW. And if you think about even this day, what that might look like when it's in use, it's open and it's in use, it's not an ideal situation to bring our students there, even if they cleared out the location when we got there, number one. Number two, it is very close to the 1,000-foot evacuation guidelines that exist. Those guidelines exist because if there is a building problem, let's say there's a suspected gas leak, obviously, we can't be outside in front of a building, so we go to the alternate evacuation site. The guidelines from the state tell you those should be about 1,000 foot away or more. In some of our locations, that means there's not even a part on the property that they could go and still be safe in. As soon as there's an issue like that, we have to walk to another site immediately. We're not waiting for buses. We're walking immediately, under certain circumstances, that the fire department would say, we have to move that far away from the building. This was not one of them. They were investigating, as you know, an issue inside of the building, but they weren't worried about combustion. So we were able to stay on the property. So one, how far away is it? Two, how well can it really house our students and staff and take care of, let us take care of the people while we have them there? Here's an example of that. If we're going to a location that can, that can hold the entirety of us, but it only has two bathrooms, and it's got almost 800 people in the building, that's not an ideal site. So we look back at all of those, we made adjustments. You look here, for example, Watertown High School, primary evacuation site, this is a change. This is something Larry Black offered up as a possibility. We would go entirely to the Watertown Fire Department on Main Street. The plans that existed for many years past had these students walking, some walking to Polk, and some walking either to St. Mary Magdalene or Swift if necessary. We are now able, we have an agreement with the Watertown Fire Department, the entire high school, as you can see, there's a site capacity, you wouldn't think it was this large, but it is from the outside, there's a site capacity of large, but it is from the outside, there's a site capacity of 1,400 at the Watertown Fire Department, and I'm talking about the one at the bottom, the students would walk down French Street, take a left, and we are actually even able to dismiss by buses. There is a large parking lot in the back, so we have that set up. That was very good news for us when the fire department offered to do that. What it means is they have to clear out the, they have to clear all the engines and they're out of the fire department. So as soon as they got the call from us, Larry would be the one who came or his next in command if he weren't there, and we knew we had to do the 1,000-foot evacuation of the high school, down the hill we would go. And like always, the police department's role in that, they closed down streets where necessary to, to get the students safely from one spot to another. In particular, of course, we had to think about things when we looked at new locations, like where are the sidewalks? One, two, what if it's winter time and people haven't cleared their sidewalks, which won't have any control over until we're in the situation? So those are some of the pieces, we went back to the police department again to about also to look at the way the routes would go. And you look, we, we not only changed the location, but this document went out to all and you see, they actually give directions for which way they would be walking and so on, that the fire department, the police department now has too, so that they can set up, they can know in advance, grab this and come and start shutting down whatever roads they might need to on the spot. You see, again, back to Watertown High, I'm addressing that one because it's the first one on the list, primary evacuation site is now the Watertown Fire Department, the alternate evacuation site is SWIFT, and we need to have an alternate wherever possible because your best laid plans may not work out. If for some reason something is wrong at the fire department on the same day, then where? And yes, SWIFT is a, is a long walk, but it's the next closest that we can get all of our students to safely that can hold all of them. You see the bus evacuation site, this is new, this is a part of the plans that we've implemented since this has happened. I should bring something up and, so it's of note here. Anytime we need to evacuate one of the schools, we now have an agreement with the bus company. There are many times when we evacuate a school that we don't actually end up sending kids home or leaving the grounds. Someone thinks they smell gas, for example, in a room and the whole school gets evacuated and you find out they left a gas burner on in the science lab. They find that, they shut it down, everybody comes back inside. However, moving forward, because if possible, we want to be able to bus our students to our own locations. Obviously, we would rather not have to walk anyone anywhere, no matter what the weather is. It will happen that we have to, as I said, when there is a definitive order from the fire department because there's a, there's a possibility of combustion, we're leaving, we're walking right then. If it's pouring rain, if it's 20 below zero, that's not what people like to hear in the sense that we may be walking, you know, a half a mile with students that don't have coats, for example, in the snow, in the cold, but when our goal is to get them to safety and away from the problem that may be, that's how that will happen, much like this, the alarm goes and people are walking out with whatever they have at the time. That said, the bus company has agreed that the minute we evacuate a call, a, a, a school, they get a phone call and they will begin assembling the bus drivers. In the event that they get a second call from us that says, we either got to dismiss them from X location or we've got to bus them to X location, and that will cut down on some of the time because typically, when we make a phone call from, depending on the time of day, because the bus drivers work in shifts, number one, number two, there's different routes they do, there's different schools that they do, it could be as much as 40 minutes to an hour before we have buses on a scene. We're looking to cut that time back by getting it started immediately. Secondary to that, they will start doing it, if we then determine we are able to go back into the building, we call and we cancel and they stop the presses, so to speak, and we don't need them, but they've at least agreed to do that. It may sound like a small task to have done that, but the bus company is a business and they allow their employees to go home. When this happened at SWIFT, for example, many of the people were out shopping. There were people who said, I'm at the West Farms Mall, I'm at Merritt and Mall, they were in between shifts and could not get here all that quickly. Go through, when you go through, you see, some of the, some of the rest have not changed. John Trumbull, for example, is the next school on the list with the evacuation site details. John Trumbull, as you know, is, is a large school. When you talk about staff and students, we're over 800, and the closest place to walk to is Polk. Polk only fits 636 from another school, so we have to divide and go between Polk and the Watertown Fire Department on Buckingham Street. One of the things that we ensured was the case after we went through these, by the way, is that principal at John Trumbull, knowing the numbers also, has designated who would go to which evacuation site ahead of time, so that it's not the day of the emergency and she's trying to coordinate which kindergarten, whether kindergarten goes to the site versus that site. And several factors impacted that, every one of, every one of the schools had to do that if they had to divide. John Trumbull is actually, under normal circumstances, the only one that has to divide. SWIFT, if for some reason they have more people in the building than usual, would have to divide. But with their normal staff and faculty and, you know, some visitors, they can all fit at St. Mary Magdalene, at the school, with maybe very few that either had to go down to the church, as you see, the church is large, and that is another example, by the way. If you think about walking distance, we could have gotten them to the church faster than the school. School has school facilities that are better for us to put that many students into, bathrooms, if we had, if we needed some other medical assistance, we have nurses' offices and so on. So that's why the choice was made to go there, even though we can certainly fit everyone in the church, the church is larger. So again, John Trumbull going to Polk and the fire department, there's a split. If they were bussed out, they would be bussed to Watertown High School. Just keep going with these because many of these are not changes. Polk Elementary School goes to John Trumbull if they have to walk, and if for some, you see the site capacity there is 945. So when you see the alternate there, it's not because anyone has to be split, it's simply because, again, what if there was an issue at John Trumbull and so we couldn't take Polk to John Trumbull? What's the backup to that? And that would be St. Mary Magdalene School. And they would be bussed to Watertown High School. SWIFT Middle School, again, St. Mary Magdalene is the first, the church is the second, and the high school is the bus site. Judson presents a special problem. On that side of town, there is nowhere to take them but Taft. And so we had to go back to that plan, speak to the people at Taft, wanted to reiterate and make sure that we knew exactly where we would go at that location, and as you can see, it's, it's the athletic center. And notice on this one, this is on a typo, the primary evacuation site is Taft School Athletic Center, 90 Guernsey Town Road, and so is the alternate, because it truly is the only place in walking distance we can fit all of them to. The reason it's listed twice, however, is because there's two different ways to get there. And we look to head to that in the sense that if there's a road issue, if it's, if there's a tree down, if there's wires down, some kind of an emergency that, that would be weather related, for example, but we had to leave our own building, do we have one more way to walk there? We are still looking, to be perfectly honest, is there really any other place that we could assemble all of them with any fair amount of walking? And for example, it's a, it's a long walk down to the fire department if we had to do that, and so that is, that is a possibility. So it's not that if we were under dire circumstances and there was something absolutely wrong with Taft and we couldn't get there, could we just stand out in the street? No, we would more than likely make our way, very long way down to the fire department on Main Street. But there is no other location closer. And the bus to evacuation site, Fort Judson, is at Watertown High School. Can I pause for a moment because I saw while I was going that Yuritza Vasquez is here? And I have a feeling that you would probably rather me pause and come up and get your certificate than to listen for the rest of this when you probably want to go home and go to bed? Or if not, your parents at least want you to go home and go to bed. So, Yuritza, I'm glad that you're here, and I'll, we'll say again that Yuritza is in grade four at Judson, and she was one of the students of the month for December. And I apologize that I did not notice you were sitting there the moment you walked in because I was very involved in what I was talking about. But we're so glad you could come here tonight. I have a certificate for you if you could come up and get it from us, and then I'll pause for, for just a moment too, because we want to make sure that your parents are able to get a picture of you with me, okay? So, Yuritza Vasquez, come on up, grade four student wants from Judson.
Actually, she's going to get the royal treatment. Let's put the board behind her as well. And her principal?
Yes, you're getting a way better picture.
So, those are the specific logistics that we looked at most. Bus company, evac sites. One other piece that's associated with that, I, I circled back to our food services director, and this was a question that I actually began asking after we had the power outage at Judson. What if we have to feed a whole school somewhere else? David assured me that we have enough food stock to do that. What I found out as a result of having those conversations, though, is that we would be in an even more prepared place if Dave Folds wrote some protocols for the cafeteria workers in those kind of situations. Again, for example, if he's not there that day and someone else has to coordinate it, it's all in writing. So we can feed any one of our schools in addition to either the high school or the middle school if they get taken to our own locations. To be clear, we cannot do that at an offsite location. And so in part what that would mean is that clearly, for example, if we have to evacuate the high school down to the Watertown Fire Department, we have two possible goals. One is dismiss them from the fire department as soon as possible, in particularly if they haven't eaten. Or two, keep them there long enough to get the buses to then bus them again. They'll walk there and to bus them to SWIFT and then feed them there. But that's, that's a side detail of these plans, but I just wanted to share that with you because it is a change that we wrote protocols, and thank you, David Folds, for working with me to do that. Now, let's go back to the, the issue of communication, in part even related to these evacuation plans. One of the things that as an administrative team, when we met, that we decided to do was to have every building level administrator record a generic message that could go out in the event of any given emergency. Let me start by saying that's not the ideal. The ideal is that, that a message is recorded real time when whatever is going on, so that the first message that goes out has specific information in it. But as we learned when this happened at SWIFT, those best laid plans won't always be able to happen as quickly as we would like them to. We, having the communication piece, when the building gets evacuated, be of the essence for parents so that they are finding out as quickly as possible from the district. If we have templates recorded, it's a push of a button when it goes out, and it can happen from anywhere that we can have an administrator get onto the Blackboard Connect app from a cellphone, or, this is another piece that I, I know the board knows, but I will say here again publicly, or another way of communicating that we found out as a result of this exists that we did not know. And that is, as a result of the emergency management, the debriefing, that we coordinated between the district, the fire department, the police department, hospital, AMR, Torrington Area Health, we all got together, as I said, on the 17th of December and talked through this incident and, you know, what to learn from that and to do differently. And as I was talking to that group about the communications needs, when you're out of a building, when you have limited access to phones and so on, Chief Black said to me in that meeting, you know, I didn't even think of this because of what we were doing on the day that we were doing it, but we have hotspots in every one of the fire trucks and we have laptops in every one of the fire trucks. And in an emergency, when you need to get on the internet or to use that laptop, for example, to press send on that message, you can use our fire trucks or his own vehicle. So that's one place as a backup if we did not have access ourselves. So those generic messages, for example, one of them, we need to evacuate John Trumbull Primary School. Please listen carefully to all following messages, we will send another message within 30 minutes. That's an example of the generic messages that the administrators and I have recorded so that no matter who it is, the, the button can be pressed, if you will, and that message will go out. Again, is that the ideal message? No. But putting the time into it is where we're trying to let people know, sit tight, because for example, if we're then outside and have to make a decision to walk to a different evacuation site, if something went wrong at the first or whatever, the next message can come out and say, we did evacuate, we are here. When we get to a place, we can send a more personalized message, but at least the message goes out immediately. Another piece that came out of that emergency management debriefing to do with the communications was how to streamline the communication of school district personnel with parents or guardians when a student needs to be transported to the hospital. This was a large part of our discussion because it was something that we were not happy with the way that it went, frankly. I should start by saying that as a part of that debriefing session, what I was told by the hospital, Torrington Area Health District, was that in many cases, in, in what they call a mass casualty incident, that is what they, they call this event because of the number of students that needed medical attention. And again, remember, 39 of them went to the hospital, but 62 of them received some kind of attention outside in triage areas and so on. And so all 62 of those people needed to get a phone call. Your student was seen for this or for that, or they need to be picked up by you, so those were some of the phone calls that had to go out, or worst case scenario, your student was sent to the hospital and they were sent to Waterbury or St. Mary's Hospital. Ideally, the way it should be is that those phone calls are made as the students are leaving or even once they're in the ambulance as a worst case scenario, so that their parents are aware and can meet them at the hospital. What I was told by the hospital was that- What I was told by the hospital was that, generally speaking, this isn't just specific to schools, those calls are often not made until they get to the hospital in a mass casualty incident. That said, as I said at that meeting, I'm saying again here, that's not the way we want to do it. So, how do we then do it differently? And we had a conversation at that meeting about when faculty members could and could not ride in the ambulance with students, because there are times they can and there are times that they cannot. And that changes our response, whether or not they can actually get in the ambulance. If the first responders deem a student in critical condition for any reason, we cannot ride in the ambulance. We have to get people into their own vehicles and to go to the hospital. That honestly presents a little bit more of a problem in some cases when we may have trouble even getting cars out of a parking lot because of the amount of emergency vehicles that are there. However, we had this conversation with the entire group there, the Police Department, the Fire Department, so that we all have the same understanding and we all know from the commander sense that, for example, if Jill Brown needs to go to the hospital and she is in critical condition, so no one can ride with her, the administrator will be saying to the Police Department, "We have to let..." Leslie Karate is the designated staff person from SWIFT. "We have to let her get out of here in a car. She's got to get to the hospital." To be clear, as a result of this, what this means is the following. One, all of the schools have designated faculty members who would be the people that went to the hospital in an emergency situation. Had that been done before, to some extent, but not as formally as it is now, because it required a lot of conversations in advance about who we could always count on to be able to go. Now, that's obviously if they're at work, but there are backup plans for when they're not there. So, for example, at the high school, that's counselors. That's potentially the school psychologist. In some cases, that might even potentially be a secretary, someone from the school. And you notice the thread that runs through these, it's people that don't have to supervise students themselves. That's what we had to determine in every school. Who are the people who we can have on this list that they already know too? They are willing to do it, to leave the scene and to go either in the ambulance with a student or in their own car and go to the hospital so that, one, at worst-case scenario, in my opinion, it's worst-case scenario, as they get into the ambulance, they're making a phone call, either with their own cellphone or as the ambulance company told me, with the cellphone. Cellphones of the people in the ambulance, because they have them. So, that was another agreement that we made. If for some reason, similar to SWIFT incident, we're outside and the person that's getting in the ambulance left their cellphone inside, want to call right then, they can use the ambulance drivers on the way there. I still say that's worst-case scenario, because best-case scenario is that the people who have been designated to do that logistics piece, and this is what we revisited both at SWIFT and at every one of the schools, are making the phone calls on the scene. With this many students, however, I'll go back to what I just said may not be the ideal and say it actually might be the ideal, because one of the things that happens, even if you have five people designated, and in a crisis, five people making phone calls outside to parents is actually a lot when you think about what we are doing large scale. We're trying to account for all the students. We have people who are in charge of students. They can't be making phone calls. If there are even five people making phone calls and in a situation such as a SWIFT, 62 people have to get a phone call, somebody's going to be the 62nd person that gets the phone call, right? And that ambulance is going to be well gone with their student to the hospital. So, if we are in a situation with that many children being seen, the best-case scenario is actually that whoever's riding with them or behind them is the person that calls. On a, with lesser students being seen, it's the people who are designated outside to be able to call. The backup to that, so let's again say, let's say that for some reason, those five people are out there and were out there with two, they're out there with two cellphones. So, Plan C in all of the plans is that we make contact with Munson House, to the secretaries, not my own because she has a different role with a larger-scale communication with the board and press and so on. But there are two secretaries at Munson House who would get the calls with the students' names so that they could call if we needed to do it remotely. And that's an update to the plan. That day, we were trying to manage some of the communication, as you know, by utilizing the high school, the administration of the high school, who, for example, sent out the Alert Now and was trying to get other numbers in some cases for students whose emergency contact information wasn't up to date, because that was another issue. You know, in some cases, we're parents, we had trouble getting hold of. Those were smaller examples, but they were something else we talked about. Let me just pause for a moment because that's a lot of information for you to take in at once, between the changes to the evacuation sites, some of the changes to how the communication works, and see if you have any questions before I continue.
Questions pertaining to what she's discussed so far? Emergency evacuation locations, everything else that she described?
You can come back to it if you think of something after as I move on. So, there's another piece that I sent home for all of you to see, and I sent it blank because this is a confidential piece of the plan in every school. It said Appendix 6 on the top, Incident Command Structure for School. These existed in all five of the schools. They didn't all look exactly like this. This is the state-recommended version. And it has, as you can see, who's the school commander, who are the alternate school commanders. So, let's use SWIFT as an example. The school commander is the principal. The alternate school commander is the assistant principal. And there is a second, and this is where, those are the obvious things, so I can say those. The rest of the names that go into here are confidential, in part because, again, you have to think about worst-case scenario, and I hate to even talk about this, but if we're in a terrorist situation, for example, people don't want people to know who's in control of doing what. And that is why these parts of the plan are confidential, and school district personnel must keep them confidential too. You notice on that flip chart, for example, that I showed you, that now looks the same for all the schools under general information. Number one says, keep the plan and all the information in it confidential. Report to who you're supposed to report to and not to anyone else, because you don't want all these side conversations going on about a student's medical issues or a change in a location that we've had to make to evacuate to, for example, because of an issue that we don't want to publicize. Again, it's a worst-case scenario if there's an active shooter and the information is being kept to a minimum of transmitting, especially over radios. So, this, though, is another large piece of how we looked at the logistics and the communication aspect of it, to ensure that the plans all looked the same, not only so that when we all get into a room and talk about them, we're all talking about the same thing. We define the terms the same. Everyone understands that this role, that the role of the mental health officer is X. We all have that understanding. That's one reason. The secondary reason to that, however, is because, one, we often call upon a number of our administrators or our mental health personnel, for example, from different buildings, to assist in a situation. And if Mary Lou Lurs is going to go to the high school and assist Paul Jones with a mass-scale incident, which she has done in the past and vice versa, Paul Jones came down when we had this, when we were looking for more hands on deck because of the number of students we were evacuating, they shouldn't have to have a long conversation about what the plan looks like or who's in control of what. So, by doing this, and this is, again, something that we have standardized over the past two weeks, three weeks since this has happened, Paul Jones understands exactly what's here because it's the same as his building. It has different names. Number one. Number two, all of the schools now have an understanding about what the other schools' emergency plans look like and have the binder of the plans, because in an emergency, for example, SWIFT, if they're going to bus to, where are they going to bus to? They're going to bus to the high school. When those students and faculty and staff from SWIFT come to this high school, the people here at this high school, and particularly the administrators and the nurse and maybe the counselors and some other key people, have to know what the plan is once they get here and people, for example, and this is another reason why part of what's in here is confidential, what needs students have. So, again, as a result of this process, one of the things that was changed is that in all of these school binders of plans, they have a list of every one of their students that has any special needs at all and what their accommodations are. That's necessary information for an administrator who's helping in another place, for any of us at central office who are going to come to a scene, and also for a receiving school of another school. So, it's one more way that internally, we were looking to communicate more even with each other. Let me make sure that I hit the, oh, the letters. Here's another piece. We have standardized some of the letters using some of the state templates to send home, much like I send a district snow letter home, and then individual principals send a letter home too, because the more the communication, the better. They might have already seen it in mine, but they get to see it in the school one too. Sometimes they pay attention to one, not the other, so on. So, for example, we needed to have a way that we uniformly communicated certain aspects of the plans with our community. And one of those issues that we have seen in both the evacuation at SWIFT and the evacuation of the high school in the previous year is going back to this idea of the reunification and releasing of parents to students. Logistically, in a school emergency situation, particularly in evacuation, that is probably one of the most difficult pieces to manage, because it doesn't matter if you have told parents, like we do in this letter, not to come to the school, not to call the school, because, for example, we may not even be in the school, so they're calling the wrong location to get any information. They are going to come. They're going to be worried about their children, and they are going to come, and they are going to want their children, no matter where they are. That said, we had to reiterate who we will and won't release students to. That's a uniform policy from the district. The person has to be 18 or older, child knows them, for example. You have to think sometimes here about John Trumbull, for example. That sometimes is an issue. And that the person we might call, or that they might have to call as a parent because they are too far away and say, "Kathy, I need you to go to SWIFT Middle School and pick up my daughter." We want to make sure parents have already had those plans in place themselves too, because, again, our best-laid plans are sometimes not going to go according to plan. So, when we want to dismiss students, again, let's use SWIFT as the example, and we don't want to send them home and have no one there, there are still going to be times, that is going to happen. We are going to walk from SWIFT, for example, to another location. We are going to send repeated messages that there things may have been left in the school, but we have them at a temporary location and we need to dismiss them. And we need to have parents who have plans also for what happens when a student comes home and thinks their parent was going to be there and they aren't. That's one of the pieces of communication. We are looking for these standardized letters to share with parents to make sure they have their own disaster, emergency plans, if you will. However, that said, as you know, part of the reason I was looking for a bus-to evacuation is exactly this reason, because we simply cannot send John Trumbull Primary School students home to no one. So, one of two things has to happen. They have to be kept with us at another location until a parent can come to get them, or if worst-case scenario, they went home and thought someone was going to be there. That's already automatic. It's always been automatic. The bus company would bring them back, and they would bring them back to wherever we were if we had dismissed from a different location. They would call us. They would bring them back to wherever we were to wait for their parent. One of the things just to note, this is not from the district, but it was something that came out of the emergency management conversation with the hospital. We had the emergency room head from Waterbury Hospital there with us. They will treat our students whether or not there are any adults with them. If something happened that there couldn't be any adults with them, they will treat them. They will just not release them. That was a clarification that was made, because in some cases, again, when a student is not critical, obviously, when a student goes to the hospital and they're critical, the hospital is going to treat them. But in some other cases, our nurses understood it, that they may not provide lower-level treatment services until their parents were there and could be contacted. That is not true. The hospital will treat a student for whatever they need treatment for, even if their parent is not there, and even if no one from the district were there, even though that's, again, not the way that we would want to do this. I just feel like I need to make clear too, we are not talking about sending one-to-one staff with students. That's not possible, especially in a mass casualty sense like this. There is no way we could have sent 40 people, even if people had been designated in advance from SWIFT to go with those students. We sent two to Waterbury Hospital. We sent one to St. Mary's Hospital. We needed more than that, and now those people have been designated to make sure that if there's this many students going, there are more than that. But we asked about guidelines for how many from the hospital, for example, and they said if it was possible that we sent one for every five students, that would be reasonable. And that's what we looked at doing. Dave Bromley, in that debrief, also mentioned that their policy is that a police officer should be sent from the Police Department to the hospitals until all parents are there also. That did not happen that day, but it was reiterated and spoken to the chief about that since. The major pieces of this I've just hit in more detail than may have been necessary, but I wanted to make sure that you understand where we are with the big picture, particularly related to the communication of it. Couple of other small pieces. Working with the chief of police, we have ensured that the Police Department is walking through the buildings, different police officers walking through the buildings throughout the course of the week. That has been done on and off. I can speak to it personally, even from the time that I was here up through being the superintendent, that here and there you would see not our school resource officer, but other people walking through. As a part of the meeting that I had with the administrators, one of the things that we discussed was the need for as many of our police as possible to know the general layouts of these buildings. And so, that was another conversation I had with the chief of police to make sure that that continued and maybe was stepped up a little bit. And he has done that. They have been walking through. They don't go through every school every day, but the goal is that once a day, two officers walk through. And they're not necessarily the two officers. They are rotating through who is on duty. Likewise, all of the principals have had contact with Chief Black again. I, as you know, talk to Chief Black probably five times a day, especially since this happened, so it wasn't renewed contact with me. But it came out of the meeting with the principals, just a discussion again to come through and look at the facilities, look back at the plans, and give us any feedback, if they had any, to the changes that were made. Honestly, I don't expect that to be the case, because all of the changes that I just talked about were done in conjunction with the fire chief, the police chief, the ambulance companies, and the hospitals. So... So, but as a matter of course, just to ensure everybody is there and looks at the plan again, and to be perfectly honest, in part because it's not so much about the fire chief as it is about the police department angle, because Dave Bromley was our school service, uh, school security officer for years and years. That was his job, he was our liaison, and he retired December 31st. And at the police department, his role is being split between people. So what I have asked Chief Gavales to do is to have the people that he is splitting the responsibilities amongst, and any other police officers, that he can spare to come to sit down at a meeting with all of the administrators and the fire chief, to one more time look through this now in its entirety. If he would do that, and, and they are going to do that. Some of them, I think one is even scheduled for this week, I believe, here at the high school. They are doing them in, in stages. All that is, frankly, is, is a revisiting of the school safety committees that meet every year anyway. But it needed to happen again, because there are new police officers who are responsible for the schools and, and looking into the school's security aspect. Now, do you have any more questions, or were there, I know I've answered the questions that were asked of me last time. I know I've given more information than that, that, as I said, you may need time to, to think through, before some other questions may make sense.
Dr. Cardamola, before we take any questions from board members, I wanted to ask you, if you would, can you explain the dynamics a little bit to the board in regards to leadership on site between the principal, the fire chief, and the police chief?
Thank you.
And who is actually in charge in a crisis like this?
Thank you, because that was a piece that was a major point of discussion in the debriefing. When there is an emergency that requires police and fire intervention, particularly a medical or an emergency related to a building issue, typically, the overarching site commander is the fire chief. Whoever the highest ranking police officer is there, is who's in charge for the police. But they still, to some degree, answer to the, to the fire chief, because he's the overarching of the scene. And then there is whatever building administrator, and that goes back to this incident command setting. On a scene, that actually isn't even me. Nine times out of 10, I shouldn't even be at the scene, to be perfectly honest. Because there are a number of things that need to be done that are difficult for me to do from the scene. And so, my role is not necessarily to be on site. I, I certainly showed up at SWIFT that day and, and was on site because of the, the scale of what was happening, and, and knowing that they needed assistance. But I say that just so you understand that, from the site perspective, I, I'm not the commander either. Because it's, it's a case of too many chefs. The school principal is in command of everything to do with the students. And that's one of the things that we had to discuss in this emergency management meeting, because I had to make sure from the district standpoint that the fire department and the police department knew that we had to coordinate this response throughout the entire process, which sometimes gets lost along the way, not because people are being difficult, but because everyone gets into their role, and they're doing it, and sometimes they're doing it in isolation. And an example of that, at what happened at SWIFT that we talked about in the debrief is, again, the coordination of the pickup from the VFW, from in front of the VFW. Police were, police were handling that. And they would, because traffic had to be stopped, and so on. However, our school personnel were sent down there also with information. And it's going to be our school personnel, for example, that know whether or not this person is on the list to pick this child up. And so, in a situation such as that, as an example, what we say needs to override anybody else who is, who is there. Because at no time can we give up responsibility for our own students and the policies and the procedures that we have in place, until the students are with their parent or their guardian, or whoever has sent, been sent to them. That was a major part of the conversation, how do we make that look better? And one of the things that we made an agreement to was the following. As soon as they arrived for an incident, the fire chief or whoever, the highest ranking, fire, police, and the site administrator, would start with a conversation about the situation. And continue meeting or using certain radio channels that we use to be secure, to continue communicating with each other. And that's another aspect of the incident command system that has to be followed. And I'll give another example that's the same as why I wouldn't necessarily be the person in doing some of the things that you would do on a scene. It's the same reason the principal can't typically do some of those things. If we're talking about triaging students, for example. Your, your first inclination, as an administrator, is going to try to be to triage the students who are being seen and who might be ill. But as the site commander, that's not your role. And you have to be able to stay in the role that has been designated by these plans, or they, or they, they'll fall apart. Everybody who has a role in these plans has to do the role of what's in the plans, and only that. Doesn't mean you can't think outside of the box when you're in the situation. It just means that everybody has to understand who is in charge on every angle. So, does that, does that answer?
It does, and particularly, you know, concerning to me relative to SWIFT was that in those binders, in those emergency bags that are taken outside by personnel, that has the most updated form on every single student in the school. If you have the fire chief in charge and the principal in charge, somehow, that information has to be carried over.
Right.
And, and that was a concern, is how are we orchestrating that information so that the students' safety and our responsibility to take care of them is first?
The go-bags are another piece that was looked at, for example, in this. We had to do some work with technology to ensure that every time people are updating their information at home, because as you know, Infinite Campus allows parents to make their own changes. And the way the system is set up, we don't get a notification of those changes. We just, the information changes, period. So, some work with Infinite Campus and ad hoc reporting has to be done to be able to generate a report so that they aren't just reprinting the information in those go-bags every single day. Because every night, parents could be going in and changing what the primary number is, for example, and we need to be outside with the most current information. So, for anyone who may need the, the definition, the go-bag, and, and we all call them the same thing now. It's the taken-go bag, it was the emergency bag, we just refer them as the go-bag. What is, there are, there are at least two of those in every school. Kind of depends upon the size of the school and the locations. But there are at least two in every school. There's one in the main office, and there's one in the nurse's office. And what's contained in those bags are the summary sheets for our students, their names, their addresses, and the, the parent or guardian names, and the primary numbers to reach them on. Medical awareness lists, which we have to keep as, in other words, again, someone with an allergy would be on the list, someone who needs an EpiPen would be on the list. There are also EpiPens in the bags. And there are things that have to be added to the bags in the case of an emergency that aren't constantly kept in there. For example, if a student needs insulin, we can't keep the insulin in the bag, because it has to be kept, some of them need to be kept refrigerated, and, and/or we don't have extra, because they're not district supplies. They are prescriptions that parents bring in. Our nurses have to go by the list, which we have revisited again as a result of this and these conversations, and make sure that it's always up to date, whatever medications they may need to bring out, in case we're somewhere for an elongated period of time. Another piece that's in the go-bags, but has been spotty across the district, because it depends on whether or not faculty reported back our faculty information sheets that are the same. And this is a conversation we had as administrators. Primary concerns are students, yes, but we also have to worry about the people that work in the buildings. And people are sometimes less apt to share their medical information that we might need, for example. So, we developed, again, a consistent form, because they looked different in the schools, and everyone didn't always turn them in. We developed a consistent form that every faculty and staff member has to turn in. Now, if they choose not to write what's on it, I, we can only go by the information they give us. So if someone does not want to tell us that they have diabetes, for example, they're not going to tell us that. But we have put it back out there to them to also keep their information. Who is their emergency contact? We've always had that. Who is their emergency contact, and what medical needs might they have that a principal is going to have to be, and/or emergency management is going to have to be aware of in a situation? Because, take it down one more level of detail. Let's say we have to evacuate John Trumbull and walk down to the fire department. We are going to have both students and staff who may have issues being able to walk from one place to the other. So, with students who may be in wheelchairs, or we have some students with walkers at John Trumbull, for example, we had to look at plans for them wagon, using their wheelchair, using wagons. But we also have to know, we should know, if one of our faculty members who needs to walk with those students, for example, has a knee problem and won't make the walk. What do we do about them? Are we going to send the, the gator that we are looking to buy at the high school, for example, in this budget, for the, for the landscaping down to pick them up? Are they going to get put in a police car and driven up? And who's going to take their place with those students if they can't make the walk? These were a number of the conversations that we had to have as administrators in looking back at these plans and making sure that there were backups and that we had all of the information necessary. The technology has changed in terms of our, our director of technology, and I had this conversation. There is an ad hoc, is what we call it, report that can be run, so that it shows any changes that were made to certain fields. And it can't, what we ended up, we wanted it to run it automatically. That's, our goal was that it ran it automatically and it sent it to a secretary and a principal at a school.
So anytime?
Anytime you changed it, we wanted an automatic notification. We worked with Infinite Campus and found their software wasn't capable of doing that. It's disappointing, because there are other kinds that are, but that's a conversation for a different night, because we're looking to make some changes there. In the meantime, instead, an ad hoc report has to be run, so that any changes come up. So if Leslie Karate changes your contact information tomorrow, tonight when you get home, tomorrow, they're running the ad hoc report, and maybe you're the only one, and it will come up that says Leslie Karate changed her information. Now they reprint your children's sheets, and go to that, those go-bags, pull out their sheets, and put the new sheets in. Because we need those outside, not only so that we can make the parent phone calls, but also because we have medical awareness that has to go with the emergency people. So, if, if your child has a, an EpiPen, we need to hand your contact information and, and the fact that the student has an EpiPen over to the first responders as they take them.
Okay, so for, for now, I, I was mistaken. I thought that we could get an email sent to a designated employee anytime if something was changed, but we can't, we have to run a report on a daily basis?
Correct.
See what was changed?
Correct.
And then a person is designated to go in those go-bags and update them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions for Dr. Cardamola?
I have a, a little comment about this particular situation. Is it possible to lock the parents out at a certain date, print, print the papers that are current, and then say, at this point, you can't make any more changes alone, you have to make them through the secretary, and then after, after the secretary makes them, then print the, an updated sheet?
That is possible to do. The district got away from insisting that people do them on paper years ago, and in partially in an attempt to make sure we always had the right information, because we found they were more likely to not send in the form with the change, but they were more likely to make it themselves. So, it is something we talked about again as we went through this process. And although it puts more work on us to run this, to run this report and to update the bags, if it's going to mean that more parents go in, log in and change their information, then send in the piece of paper, we'd still rather do it that way, because we're only as good as the information that the parents give us. So, to answer your question, we could do that. I'm not sure it's the best way to do it at this point. It would make, it would make it easier for us not to have to run the report, but we run the risk of the information not being accurate, because we didn't allow them to change it themselves.
Yeah, and, and there are so many times where, you know, my cell phone number was, one cell phone number on Friday, I lost my phone, and I had to use my daughter's, or I had to buy a new one, I don't have a new number yet, or whatever the case may be. I mean, I, I, as a parent, in particular, want to be able to go in and make that change. There's a sense of security, knowing I'm not calling the school or having to fill out a form, and depending on someone else to go in and make the change for me. I like the ability to take that responsibility on as a parent. I'm not, especially in this day and age. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question regarding the binders for each school. I wanted to find out, is there only one per school? Is each person on this list carry, have one handy somewhere? How many are located at each school, are they locked up? Is there online access in the event of, of a fire, and, you know, just are there backup methods as well?
The administrators all have one, the nurses. Anyone else who has a, a role in the plan, has the parts of the plan that, that are relevant to them. There are, again, some of the confidentiality and information of individual students that don't go through everyone. But, numbers-wise, depending on how many administrators there are, obviously, they, like I said, they all have one. There is one for the secretaries in the main office. And we have a collective drive that's, that is private for materials, where we put some human resources materials and some things like that on the network that only certain people have access to. These are there. They've, they've just been re-upped. They were, they actually were already there, because when they were submitted to the state for approval, even, you know, before these changes were made, we had to have access to them at central office, because they have to be sent.
So in addition to having the two go-bags, everybody also has online access that should have online access to the district?
In an emergency, you mean?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify.
In an emergency?
In an emergency to the student information, or to the plan?
Student information, I think.
Yes.
Is that what you were referring to?
You were referring to the plan.
No, the plan, as well as the student information.
Everyone would still have access that would normally have access to the student information. So, let's just say, for example, we needed to look up something because what we had in the go-bag wasn't correct, for some reason. We would have to log in either through a phone, through a computer at another location, or, again, using the, the fire departments. Because we access our Infinite Campus database the same way that any of you do as parents. We just have different login rights. So, we can all log in from anywhere.
That satisfied my question, thank you.
Thank you, any other board members?
Dr. Cardamola, two questions. First, obviously, I think a lot of gaps have been realized as a result of this event. What's the plan going forward to review these plans internally and also engage fire department, police department, and anybody else to ensure that, you know, we're constantly looking and considering as environments change and things like that?
Every year, the plans are reviewed. They have to be, they were, they were reviewed even before this happened. That said, and it's, it's with a, it's with a committee, a safety committee that includes the fire department and the police department, the administrators, and certain other peoples, and people in all of the schools. That's actually state statute also, that that be done. So, that has been done since the state required, it's been done officially, since the state required turning in the plans. That requires you to do it once a year. That said, generally speaking, until there is another incident, a different sort of an incident, or even just carrying out any one of the incidents that actually is addressed by the plan, that is the main reason that every time there is any kind of crisis response, we have a debrief meeting. So, this meeting that I'm talking about, that I attended on the 17th, for us was normal in the scheme of things in debriefing. in the scheme of things and debriefing after any large scale incident happened. We had more people with us than we would normally have at one of those meetings because we had hospital involvement, for example. We had Torrington Area Health with us because the possibility of this being an environmental issue, I asked for them to be, to call, be called and come. The DEP couldn't attend that particular meeting but gave us whatever information in advance of it. So, every time there is an evacuation, there's a bomb threat, a lockdown needs to be done, not drills, actual situations, there is a debrief meeting between district personnel and any of the emergency responders who are there to go back through the plan again, whatever the plan was for that, and say, "Okay, did this all work the way we hoped it would and is there anything we'd like to do differently?" And there are all, anytime that I have been a part of that, and this includes as a school administrator, there have always been changes to the plans as a result of those meetings, even if there's, even if they're small changes. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
We'll go back to the agenda. Hold on, just give me a moment because I think there were a couple of things I wanted to point out that are on the agenda. You see under H, Brandon Simmons, he was here with us this evening. I don't know if he's still back there. Brandon, are you back there? If you are, come. No, he's gone. Okay, he was here at the beginning. I should have introduced him even before the meeting started. As you know, we had an IT network person leave shortly after the beginning of school year. We originally had three of them. We waited some amount of time to watch what the needs were with our new Director of Technology on board and determined that the way the role was structured in the past was not necessarily the best use of the position. It's technology. So, as we know, technology is constantly moving forward. So, we had to relook at what the job responsibilities were for that third person for that reason and also because, any of you who have been here for any length of time probably remember Dave Hoffman, who was often here with us at these board meetings setting up. And he had been a teacher in the district for many years. He retired a long time ago and for many, many years just served as a part timer doing a lot to do with AV, setting up for these sorts of meetings. The educational technology that's related to audiovisual, sometimes the smart boards, for example, he dealt with all of that with us. And he retired and we lost someone there. So, we melded this together into the position that you see. It's not an added position. It's a change in what had been the, another network coordinator position. And grateful he was here with us tonight for the first time too, to set up. You'll also see there are three field trips that are listed as possible action items tonight. These are all out-of-state trips for the robotics team. If you remember, there was a previous board meeting where we had a conversation about the timeliness of these coming in. We had to speak to the robotics team about planning ahead in the case, in some cases what happens, as you know, they win a competition, they don't know they're going until they win. So, in some cases, you're approving just in case they get there, but it's so that we never have a situation again where there's not a board meeting that can have approval before this team goes. I just wanted to also point that out too. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cartamola. I appreciate the level of detail that you provided tonight. The questions have been coming from board members through me for quite some time around the clock and quite frankly, I would anticipate that they will continue to come. So, I appreciate the level of detail that you're providing in response to those and to, in response to the work that you've done. I'd like to move to item H on the agenda, public participation. It's our first round of public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening?
Oh, I think I took too long for the parent who was here.
Once again, are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Please state your name and your address.
Stephanie Mikowski, 53, Cutler, Knoll. In reference to the go bags, as parents, we provide one set of EpiPens and inhalers to the school nurse. That's what we're required. So, what is in the go bag? I mean, I understand an EpiPen is generic and so there's one in the bag and that's great if my child needs it, but what if they have an asthma attack or any other child has any other specific med? How is that getting in the bag?
Dr. Cartamola?
Do you want me to answer from?
Please.
Okay. So, the EpiPens are kept here because there's state law that allows us to have them on hand. There is no ability for the district to keep other kinds of medications without a specific prescription. So, for example, a student with an inhaler that doesn't carry them with them, that's what I was referring to when I said that part of the plan is that the nurse has to be able to pick up the medication for the individual students that they might need on their way out.
So, if there's a fire or a quick evacuation like we had, that's, I mean, should we change the policy so that parents are required to provide two sets? I mean, this becomes a suitcase at this point, but, I mean, how does the nurse have time to do that?
So, under the best of situations, right, you're, you're bringing up a valid point. She is going to pick up the inhalers because they are near where the bag is. So, there's a locked medicine cabinet and a refrigerator, so easily they're going to take them. Are there going to be situations when they are outside without them? Yes. And that is why, in part, when we have our emergency notification sheets for the students, and this did happen at Swift, there were students outside who their need may have actually been their own prescription that they, that they didn't have when they left. It's the emergency management personnel that take care of that. So, in other words, if a student is outside and the nurse was not able to get the inhaler that they needed in that particular incident and they need it outside, they are being treated by the ambulance personnel.
Okay.
So, your question to whether or not parents should be required to bring in a separate prescription is something that I think we could talk about based on what the policy is and we would have to talk from the legal standpoint about keeping them here and bringing them and so on too. I think it's, that's a valid point to bring up. It's not the norm of how the plans are designed.
I know it's not the norm, but I think it's moving one step in a new, it's one more step that we have to, you know, there's a go bag. Well, there wasn't a go bag before maybe, so, and I know there'll probably be a lot of pushback because getting these meds is a hassle, well, insurance and it's a hassle. Every year you go through this and I, drives me crazy, but it's one more set. You know, I'm just, what happens? The kid's on the road and, you know, they need their med and they don't have it.
I agree with you that if, if that's something that we are able to do, it, it's not, it is a good idea. The, the flip side of that is, is going to be there will be parents who don't turn it in, even if we are able to do that for various reasons, including how much money they may cost and the insurance and so on. EpiPens are a good example. So, the default plan is still going to be for those students that it's the emergency management personnel that take care of them and take them to the hospital if necessary.
I had several questions that I was deleting as you kept talking because you did address them, but one of the, excuse me, one of the only other ones was in that flip chart that each school now has, does that, and it's for the people to grab when they're in the building, is there a floor plan of the building so that they can familiarize themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
This I brought out only as an example because I could share the majority of what's on here without it being confidential because it's the abbreviated version. There are a number of things that are in the rooms to be able to be taken. That's not new, to be honest. Those floor plans were always there, the ways of egress, the attendance, the current attendance sheets that teachers are required to put up there so they can, when they get outside, know that they've accounted for all of their students. And the other flow chart that I mentioned, that's an, that's an addition so that's, again, it's a smaller version of the big plan, but, but a bigger version than this. So, yes, there are a number of items that are in every classroom and every main office and every nurse's office. One of the things that we are talking about as a result of this and started placing them into the other places are this room, for example. This is no longer used primarily as a classroom in this building, but it could happen that there is a night event, not, not this one necessarily. There's a night event where there are students in here and PTO members or something. We're looking to have something here too on the wall. And obviously, you know your way out, there's an exit sign and you leave, but to have this present in this room is one of the things that came out of these conversations, that they really should be everywhere, not just where our faculty and staff know to get them.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, but you really did. I had like 10 and you.
Okay.
Delete it as you want.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight and asking your questions. That's why we have these public participations. We have two of them and we hope that more people will take that opportunity to have their questions. Just for point of information for the board and anybody in attendance, when there is a question that's asked by the public or an issue that's raised within the rules of board meeting management, unless there is an exception made as tonight, there is no requirement to address that issue immediately, particularly if it's something that needs to be looked into. But, in the circumstances like this, I knew that Dr. Cartamola had the answers that required in this, in this situation. The sooner we can communicate those answers, the better. So, thank you for doing that on the fly.
In other words, I wasn't being difficult when I said, "Do you want me to answer?" That was, that was a matter of procedure to get permission to answer the question from the table.
And I love procedure, so thank you for that. Speaking of procedure, if there are no other members of the public, we will move on. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Okay, we will move on to the report from the board chair. When the people that work in our district say that education is important, we know that they mean it. They have chosen career paths and sometimes lifestyles that incorporate learning in every single aspect of it. And as board members, it's really important that we too remain knowledgeable and up-to-date in the work that we do as members of the Watertown Board of Education. And then following in the tradition of board members and chairs that came before us, later this month, we will attend a presentation by Rich Mills on the legal rights and responsibilities of the Board of Education. This presentation is updated and given every two years to coincide with the election of new officers. And this evening, you have found either at your place or prior to tonight, a packet that looks like this. The reason why this is here is because Board Member Kathy Rinaldi and Board Member Tom Lambert attended one of those presentations that was meant for a larger scale of board members across the state and they were kind enough to bring a packet home so that we could share it. They also, it was also electronically forwarded. And in preparation for the meeting we're, the presentation we're having at the end of the month, I thought that board members could look through this. What every board member should know, it's a review of the legal rights and responsibilities. And so that in preparation for that presentation at the end of the month, you can highlight some things of interest and of concern at that point. In addition, through Shipman and Goodwin School Law Practice Group, I've provided the Robbins Rules of Order for Board of Education. For those of you who don't have copies of it and for those of you who have received one every year, thank you for humoring me. I'd hate to see Tom's office at this point and Vic too, for that matter, spending many years working on the Board of Ed. Getting back to the presentation, Rich Mills, who will be doing it, represents numerous boards of education throughout Connecticut in both labor employment and school law matters, Board of Education policies, First Amendment issues, Freedom of Information Act issues, residency and budgetary matters, all things that are extremely important for us to be knowledgeable on as board members. The presentations will include information on the 2015 Public Acts that affect the school district operations and will cover all topics related to board member communications, as I said, roles and responsibilities, the requirements of a board member and board meetings, and guidance for board members on both conduct and procedures. Again, both Kathy and Tom attended the workshop on this and I want to thank them for spending their spare time in doing that. And if you have anything you want to share about that, I would ask that you do that at this point.
All I can say is, it was very informative. Sometimes these seminars are boring. Two hours, seems like four hours, but it would have been nice if they spent even a little more time. Time will buy very quickly and the examples they use were very informative to us.
I agree. It was, in being a new board member, it was, it was good to go and hear your actual role as a board member, so it was nice to hear the do's and the don'ts. And I think the company was good, right, Tom? That was.
Thank you. In addition to the presentation that we'll have from Rich Mills, some board members have expressed to me an extreme interest in additional educational opportunities. And as I said, I love that. As a member of CAE, our district is a member of CAE, there are plenty that come at no additional cost to the district. The CAE Leadership Institute is having sessions that are designed to provide school board members with the skills and knowledge that they need to be effective advocates and leaders in subject areas like equity and excellence and student achievement at both the local and state level. And I've included for you this evening a flyer in some four sessions that they have coming up. You'll see that the application deadline for these complimentary sessions has passed. I have spoken to CAE and if any of you would like to attend any of these, three are four hours, excuse me, yeah, most of them are four hours long. One of them is via webinar. They're taking place in Weathersfield. I was speaking with Mrs. Rinaldi about this and she brought up a good point. It is free, include, or I should say included in our membership. If you didn't want to go to all four and you register for this, you certainly could pick and choose what ones you wanted to go to. I will make a small note, session two, the date has changed to March 23rd. If you do want to attend, please let me know and I will set that up for you. I will continue to alert you to any additional educational leadership opportunities through CAE, the National School Boards Association, the Education Connection and Shipman and Goodwin. And as Dr. Cartamola is a resident expert in a lot of these areas, she will also continue to share with us some educational opportunities that she think would be good for board members to be a part of. She is just as much of a part as I am in regards to getting Shipman and Goodman here to help us with the Freedom of Information Act and make sure that all the new board members as well as veteran ones are brought up to speed on those items. Anybody have any questions in regards to that? Okay, moving on to J, committee reports. Mrs. Rinaldi, curriculum instruction?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Vissensi, policy and labor?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert, budget and finance?
Just a quick reminder for committee members, there's a budget meeting on February 2nd, 6:00 PM, Swift Middle School. So, like there's many as we can get to attend, many board members have been good yet, so it'll be a fairly, fairly good meeting, a lot of information being brought out.
And I understand at this point, everybody has RSVP that they can attend? Excuse me?
No.
That's a January meeting? February 2nd.
February 2nd.
It was moved, right, the date?
Yeah, it was 3rd.
Thank you for that reminder. Going back to you for facilities, PBC and operations?
No report at this time.
Thank you very much. For community engagement, Mr. Mikowski?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much. And moving on to communications, item K. Madam Secretary, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our action items, as Dr. Cartamola, here we have three field trips related to the robotics team. It's very exciting to think of them being able to be exposed to all of these teams, both national, regional, national and from what we see from these field trips, international teams. I'd like to ask for a motion on consideration of the approval of the out-of-state field trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the Watertown High School Robotics Team Field Trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, from February 24th, 2016 through February 28th, 2016, for 23 Watertown High School students and six chaperones for the purpose of participating in robotics with the Mid-Atlantic Region teams.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lambert, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, oh, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, consideration of the approval of an out-of-state field trip to Durham, New Hampshire. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the Watertown High School Robotics Team Field Trip to Durham, New Hampshire from March 24th, 2016 through March 26th, 2016, for 23 Watertown High School students and six chaperones for the purpose of participating in robotics with teams from that area. in robotics with teams from that area.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. Stay with me for one moment. I want to just go back in the agenda for a moment and if I could draw the attention of Mrs. Davidson. Let's change under L, action items with approval from the rest of the board, that the consideration of the out of state field trip to Myrtle Beach will be A. Durham will be B. And last but not least, St. Louis will be C. Ask for motion on the consideration of the approval of an out of state field trip to St. Louis, Missouri. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the Watertown High School Robotics Team Field Trip to St. Louis, Missouri from, I'm sorry, but I'm going to think that might be April 24th through April 26th, or it's otherwise?
You are correct. April 26th through May 1st.
Okay, so April 30th, so not this March. April 26th, 2016 through May 1st, 2016, for 23 Watertown High School students and six chaperones for the purpose of participating in robotics, in robotics with national and international teams.
Thank you. Mrs. Rinaldi, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. Consideration of the approval of the acceptance of a gift. Buick GMC of Watertown donated 10 laptop computers to the high school valued at almost $3,000. And again, we are humbled by the amount of donations we receive from our local community, both private and public companies, and we really appreciate it. Do we have a motion to accept this generous gift?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the generous donation of 10 laptop computers valued at $2,800 to Watertown High School by Ingersoll Buick GMC of Watertown and that a letter of thanks be sent to the donor.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. This brings us to item N of the agenda, public participation, second round. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Last chance, any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.